Call the meeting to order, it's from Stanford pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan on a mission underground in this world where there is justice and First of all, I noticed that Joan Davis is here, so we're gonna try to speak up, so you can take the notes, just a friendly reminder.
Yeah, that would be wonderful, you asked, you did.
Need a motion for adoption of the agenda?
Second.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nora.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Here.
Okay, item four point one, the approval for the minutes, approval of meeting on May 5th, twenty twenty five, need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Jean. Linda.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nora.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Here.
Five point one, personnel consent agenda, recommend the Board of Education approve the personnel items, need a motion?
Motion to approve four point one.
I moved except to the bottom, Joe, so you're off with, sorry.
Oh, I see, okay, four point one, personnel consent agenda, need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, just checking on the registered nurses, Corey, were we replacing them?
Yes, yes. Those postings should be, if they're not out, they should be up soon.
Okay, thank you.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe. Nora.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Here.
So this will be six.
Hi.
Platform one through five eleven, need a motion?
Come on. Second.
Any discussion?
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nora.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Here.
Okay, miscellaneous items for action. CPS, E C S E recommendations, recommended that the C S E and five oh fourteen are hereby recommended to approve, need a motion?
Come on.
One second. Discussion?
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Michael.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nora.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Here.
Uh, President's reports, if I have. I don't have much to say, other than why I formally thank the community for voting passing the budget. I don't know in comparison what the pass was compared to I don't think anything like that, it was a high percentage pass.
You got it?
It was a little lower than I had, I don't know, last couple of weeks.
And the, apparently the voting change was a great success.
They did like, I did have some complaints, um, that they were on campus here and they had to go to Appalachian to vote, and they were here doing things, but we're gonna do that in the future.
One step at a time?
Yes, but this group handled the crowd well, and the easy flow in and out, and worked well.
Uh, and then the other part, which we'll be looking forward to next year, anytime that we can get this out, that next year's budget, um, we determine whether the pilot's officially, I don't know if we're saying that.
Oh yeah, I'm still trying to get a meeting with the folks out of Texas.
Okay, so, you know, people need to recognize when that comes out, whether the pilot is on or off the tax rolls, whether they're gonna continue with that or not, other than a significant impact on how the budget looks, and the levy looks like, so, anytime we can get that message out, I think it's beneficial. All right, any board committee?
Policy committee, we have three policies, we're not ready this time, and will be for next time, there's three of them, one's regarding student board member, probably part of action, student board member, um, heat, classroom heat, and then the third one is cell phone, so we'll pull that up for you next time.
Just to piggyback off that, we're putting committees together, um, around the heat index and cell phone piece, so, uh, Mr. Schofield, Mr. Muntless will kind of share the cell phone conversations with staff and some parents, and same for the heat index, because both of those are requirements that, um, we collaborate with, with those stakeholders. So we have some presentations tonight, but I have a few things, just wanna like, I can update the board, graduation, leader or not, is gonna be here quickly, June twentieth at six P M., um, typically, we try to meet in the lobby at I thirty, I forty, five-ish of O F A. Well, publicly congratulate our valedictorian, uh, Cannon and Tru, and our salutatorian, Bella Silvestri, um, really such a huge accomplishment, and work that they've obviously put in, um, it's quite, quite impressive, so, also with that, that senior class being said, I know I shared this with the board, but, um, incredible senior class, or I think we're in, we're in the class size of about a hundred and sixty-three, uh, students, we had students take four thousand seven hundred and twenty-two college credits this year, um, eighty-eight of those students had twenty or more credits earned, fifty-nine of those students had sixty or more credits earned, eighteen of those students had seventy or more credits earned, and ninety-six of them had fifteen plus college credits, so, kudos to that class, I think we calculated it out roughly, that's about a one point two million dollar savings, um, for students and their families, for their, their future academic, uh, goals and aspirations, so great job to, to the class. Uh, while I quickly represent our, uh, recognize our music department, um, they were, again, I think this is the seventh time, if not more, that they've been honored as the best communities for music education program, uh, through the NAMM Foundation, um, this is, this is an award that's been going on for around twenty-six years, so, um, consistently we continue to get that award, and obviously, it's, you know, due to the fact we have just an incredible, uh, music department, and obviously, super talented students, and, um, you know, it's just a great team effort, and they always put out a really phenomenal product, uh, to share with the community. Quick athletics updates, we have some, some, uh, really successful teams here, they're continuing to move on, so our girls' lacrosse, uh, will play Saturday, um, at four o'clock, the game, I believe, it looks like it'll be at C D, and they'll be playing Newball, so congratulations to the, the girls' lacrosse team, um, the section four championship and, and moving on in the states like football, and I say we've got some, some folks here tonight, congratulations to them, they are moving on beyond the regional, they won the section, they've won the regional, and now they're in the, the final four, um, which will be at Homer, I believe, Central School District, at nine thirty, they'll take on Beakton Town, um, really exciting, so congratulations to, to all of you for all of your hard work and your success. Track and field, a state qualifier, we have several, uh, student athletes that are gonna be participating on Wednesday and Thursday, um, this was obviously shared out, um, as one of our updates as well, so, uh, a really large, I would say, a large number of student athletes and on track and field team that are participating, um, in that on Wednesday and Thursday, so kudos to them for, for the great work that they put in as well. Presentations tonight, so we'll start out with, uh, Mrs. Castorline, who's gonna give you just an update, many of you were at the blueprint training session, um, the work that we're doing around the blueprint excellence, and we put this in place around two thousand twenty-one, and this, this, uh, past, I guess you said winter, spring, somewhere's in that ballpark, all kind of blends together, um, but the group, got the group of stakeholders back together, uh, to revisit the plan and talk about next steps, so I'll turn it over to Mrs. Castorline, I think she could, a couple of, of our staff members who were able to participate.
To come in and share some of their, their, um, experience with you, but I did make a copy for people, I wasn't sure if you had it digitally or not, and so, figured you might wanna follow along. All right, so, um, like Corey said, we, um, started this work back in about twenty-one, twenty-two, getting community together, starting to getting, uh, feedback on developing a, a strategic plan of how we wanted to, um, what were important pieces and important areas and action plans for, um, moving forward with those, meaning those goals, so this is just a little overview, just wanna take you through, um, uh, during that twenty twenty-one, during thought exchanges and bringing stakeholders together, getting, um, thoughts, concerns, and direction that, um, you know, the community stakeholders, uh, wanna see for the school, and then, um, initially developed this plan and then started working on it, but then came back around and, um, did a little check-in to see how we're doing, and if there's any changes or, you know, things that we need to do to the plan, updated, and then on April third, is when we got together in the collaboration space in high school, and really started to take the major, four major areas and, and let the community and, um, teachers, students, parents, administrators, um, kinda get together and, and look at this plan, so I brought Brittany and Michelle with me to kinda share out their experience on that night, and, um, they're very serious supporters, so like, so if some of you weren't there, and, um, and saying what the community, just like, what, what it was like in, in one, what their experience was during that. So, back in April, we had the opportunity to meet for a few hours, um, on evening, to meet with a group of stakeholders, um, consisting of administrators, and teachers, and board members, um, and community members, to take some time and talk about things that were going well and working well in our district and working well for our students, and also having the opportunity to brainstorm ways that we could strengthen different areas where needs were pointed out, um, to support students and their academics or athletics or wellbeing. So, um, during that time, we were able to break apart into groups where we, each group took kind of a priority area to, to talk about specifically and look at what we're doing well, where are the challenges, what kinds of things are we hoping to see, um, and, and so we did that, and Brittany and I both joined the priority areas of wellness and student support, and so, we did a lot of really great talking in that group with people from, there were parents in the group, there were people from elementary, all the levels of teachers, administrators, and in doing so, we really had a chance to get some great ideas, um, and I was happy to see that a lot of what we talked about showed up in the action plan, so, um, we're hopeful that we'll be able to put some of what we talked through into action in the next couple of four years. So, this was, during that time, we just went back and we visited our district mission and vision, um, and, you know, so you can be reminded of why we exist and, you know, um, what we wanna aspire to, so that was kind of the foundation for the work and, and meeting with people and trying to, like they said, you know, highlight some things that are going well, but also areas that maybe need more focus or need more strengthening. And from there, uh, we revisited our core values, we had quite a lengthy list before, but were able to work as a team and kind of say what really encompasses, you know, our core values, which are really just how we behave and what kinds of collective commitments we'll make as a team as we move forward with this action plan that you're going to, you know, that you'll be able to see and, um, highlighted here on the screen, and you can see that this year, we made a, a commitment as a district K, pre-K through twelve, to revisit our mission and vision and make sure everybody knows what that is and what mission we're on and what, you know, collective commitments that we, uh, will make to each other to work on this, and you can see the elementary collective commitments and what their highlighted areas were, and then secondary too, so these were their, um, you know, the promises, if you will, to each other that this is how we behave as we work on this action plan, and, and really just in general, how we work towards our goals in our classrooms, in our buildings, and as a district. So then, these were our, uh, four priority areas, um, from the past, and we took a look at that and broke out into those priority areas that night to kind of revisit, um, them, get like, um, the, they said, you know, some new ideas or maybe, maybe new areas that maybe need focus or areas that are going well, so you could see engaging, um, challenging learning for all, culture of collaboration, human capital, and wellness and student support, so those became our priority areas, and then, as a team that night, we, um, worked towards what would be a goal for those priority areas, so you can see each one of those and what we are striving to, to do for each of those areas, and then I just kind of breeze through the rest of the, so you can kind of see like, each priority area has a list of action steps and who is responsible in those timelines, and as we get together as a admin team, and also as a team with our buildings and teachers, we'll be able to, in those different, um, people responsible start to work together around these, you might be, we'll be able to share out those timeframes, I'm sure they'll change as people get together to, um, really dive into each one of those, um, different places to, you know, the cultural collaboration, you can see through that, all of the different areas, and human capital and wellness. So, that takes me to the last page, which is really just, okay, then now what, right? So, um, here's our next steps, um, we wanted to present this to you and to the community, and then as an admin team, we're gonna work, um, to really unpack what each of these mean, and, um, and the action plan and start to kind of, you know, put even more of a strategic plan together of how we're going to move forward with that, and then, um, we'll come back and provide updates quarterly to you all and to the community on how we're moving towards these goals, and, um, and then from there, you can kind of see the after, you know, plans after that, and, um, you can see refreshing, and by the end, you know, this is goes to twenty-five, twenty-seven, you can see coming back in twenty twenty-seven and saying, okay, let's refresh, let's get back to where we went, how we do, and if there's any other needs or any other, um, areas that might surface, surface over the next couple of years as we move, move on, you know, I don't know if Corey has anything to add, or?
Any questions from the board, I know that, um, this is, this is obviously something that we, you know, we've worked on and kind of, uh, looking back to, we spend when we meet and discuss and talk about goals and, and data and things of that nature, but this is just a, an updated version to kind of get us refocused, uh, for the next, next two years, and, um, you know, put plans in place around these specific, uh, specifically with the action plans, um, so that we can accomplish those, those things here within the district, I think that there's a lot of good stuff that was, was shared, um, the night with the stakeholder group, um, particularly, one of the things that I took away was a communication piece and the feedback that we received around the ways that we communicate to, to families, and, uh, so that prompted us to kind of put out a, a thought exchange to get more feedback around what's the best way for, uh, communication to get to folks, and know that we've, uh, we've, we've got some bits and pieces of the big way we're gonna communicate, in terms of rooms and then email, um, so, trying to stream on that, I think will be a priority moving forward, so, I do know that, um, the conversation with some folks would have to do with rooms, they are, um, one of the, couple of the big things that came up were, uh, being able to receive text messages as part of the rooms messaging piece, um, and they are updating that system to, to meet that, and so, I think that will be helpful.
It's very thoughtful, it's very, um, correct, I have measured the four objectives, you know, your last step.
I was thinking the same thing, and so, when we get together as a team and we unpack, what will those measure goals be, not necessarily out with London here, but I, 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 we would need that in order to see how we're progressing, the goals themselves aren't necessarily written as measurable, so a lot to get into those, those particular teams and figure out what those measure goals will be, so we can share out what those are.
You know, I, I think it's great that you're incorporating, having, incorporating current child and stuff, uh, in the curriculum and pathways, and, I'm curious, you know, if you go, if they're still around, I don't know how often we use the C D O standards, do you, and I know that Blue River Commission's coming out with some different kind of, um, categories or kind of packages of how they like to discuss pathways and group level, but I'm curious if you ever look at the C D O standards, I would say that's a while back.
I, I haven't, but I've had that as something I can look into and kind of understand as we move forward.
Be working.
Yeah, that, you know.
Apply in that term.
Yeah. Not as a should, should, I'm just curious, because I was way back in the day, but I was just one of all, currently all of these students, so, and it was, of all the things that the state puts out, I thought that was probably one of the better kind of packages that was never kind of taken off their shelf.
I was supposed to be a part of this, and I unfortunately got delayed and was stuck in an airport for twenty-four hours, and I really missed, uh, one of the clock opportunities, it's always been, from my nine years on the board, something very special to me, is it possible, Corey and Joe, if I could be added back to the team as you move forward?
Yeah.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Will you get kicked off?
Anybody that wants to.
You're not kicked off, no.
No, that's just the people, that's just the people that attended that night.
We're able to.
You're not getting off that easy.
Just try it.
Didn't want to, I just wanted to miss it, but, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, okay, we have Dr. Brendan now, who's gonna give us our, uh, quick overview on special ed.
Yes, it will be very quick, I expected how to pick my money, good job. No, they're, they're supposed to slide, so. You gotta help me up here.
I am, I am, I love her so fast, I didn't have the next time.
I think I was saying that I talked too much, is that what I'm saying? It's true, but. Probably did that once. Oh, oh, mercy's figuring this out, I'm sitting there using myself, I'm Dr. Hill, but I'm I've been with this for, for eighteen years, so, and, let's see, started out middle school principal, became director of community resources, more from the director, so, so, everybody, are you done yet? You want me to? Probably not. Are we not, can I fit one of these, because I can't even get to do it. You know, the slides are really not that impressive, I can just start while you keep going.
Yeah, just wanna talk through.
Yeah, all right, so, the first slide I had up here was just the, the special education department, we have twenty-five teachers, they are split up, five in Atholik Elementary, six in Awigo Elementary, six at the middle school, and eight at the L F A. We also have our new service providers, should I go over the service department? Okay, so, we employ occupational therapists and physical therapists and speech therapists, that's what they do, so, we have a small department that does therapies for our kids, we have three speech therapists, two occupational therapists, one physical therapist, and two and a half school psychologists, Mr. DeRocchi came back for half, halftime this year. All right, this was. All right, so the next slide, I just worked it down, the students we have here, students with disabilities by disability area, so, there are sixteen qualifying areas as far as special education goes, and, kind of to give you a brief overview without like the age up there, we have two hundred and twenty-four students with their full age wealth with special education services, so, there are actually a hundred and seventy-two more with five oh four plans, but that is not how we're involved with special ed technically, because they don't need the support of the special ed teachers, so we're just focusing on the special ed, so, what I can tell you from my chart here, I'm not gonna read every number to you, but, Atholik and Elementary, there are forty-nine students with services, Awigo Elementary, there are thirty-five, the middle school fifty-five, and the high school is eighty-five. We also place students outside of the district where their needs are unique and they need services that we can offer here, so, we have twenty-four students at B O C's, Hall of Room, we have a B O C's, majority of those students out of the twenty-four, I think it's sixteen, are students with autism, they're in the Oak Tree Program, they're split up between Glenwood Row, the main campus, Town Hills Elementary, and we do have a high school student at Windsor, so, he's out on the drive. Children's Home Wyoming Conference, we have two students there, one is in the residential program, one is midday school. We have the Center for Discovery, it's a residential program, the student is up in the Rockchester area, Spring Brook, another student that needs services, we can't provide, it's a residential setting, Ponyata, so, we have one student there, and then the Bank of University Children's Unit, we have one student there, that's, that program also specializes in just students with autism, so, preschool students, um, a lot of people don't realize the school starts working with kids, Michelle is two years old, so, two, three, and four year olds are considered our preschool age special ed students, and right now, we have thirty-eight students in that program, most are three and four years old, we have a few that are two, so, um, what's a qualified program, you can name the whole day of schools, get them ready to be successful kinergers, is R E C R, which is right on the road here, we have four students there, uh, BEN, which is Family Leadership Network, and Bantam, there's one student there, H C A, which is the Handicapped Child's Association, we have one student there, and then again, Bantam University Children's Unit, we have one student there. We also have with the preschool, a lot of these kids just need therapies to give them that advantage that they need to be against successfully kindergarten, they don't necessarily need to be in a full day program, so, we offer the services, speech, lots of P T and psychological counseling, speeches most common, sixty-six, occupational therapy, ten students, we have physical therapy with three students, and psychological counseling with one. Mercy's really all we've got, I can't look through that really fast without going, um, programmatically, we offer K through twelve, direct consulting, teacher support, so our gen ed students and our special ed students get to be in the school together, special ed teachers push into the classroom, help students out, they also have a resource room where they can just go to the classroom outside, or if they're regular, they're working on, be able to the special ed teacher, we have K through twelve, life skills, so that's a twelve one, two, twelve, kids, one teacher, two program mates, that's K through twelve, we can go and help them, and at K two, at Awigo Elementary, we have our students with autism, eight one one, and they're looking to expand that potentially next year, Grace can provide. We are working in regionalization, Dr. Green and myself and a bunch of other people, to possibly provide programs outside of B O C's because they are full, and To possibly provide programs outside of BOSI's because they are full and there's extensive funding. So the districts are trying to work amongst ourselves to try to figure that out. So we already do that here. We take students from Bethel, Wee, Wurk, Valley, Toga, Kinnor. I think that's it. So we've basically been doing this, we're trying to share that so that people will help us as well. Just all I've got from memory.
They all have your papers.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, sure. On the allocation, you do mention Rochester.
Yeah.
How does that work? Is like, is they very transported there? Is that just where like the, the organization is based out of, or how does that work?
Right, so that, that is a very intensive therapeutic setting, it's education and residential. So the child actually lives there.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. So that is the same as the one in Ponyata, Spring Brook, residential. Yeah, yeah.
I was wondering about the preschool kids.
Yeah.
Like, where do you get them referred to? You said someone at Jones too.
Yeah, so we'll get them from a pediatrician, they'll call, call my office. We'll get it from parents themselves. Daycare providers can even refer. Pretty much anyone can refer, parent, I didn't say that. And just say, you know, they have concerns and then we have different groups within the county. They contract with the county itself to go out and evaluate the child, see if they qualify for services. And then to hit the waitlist, it's pretty likely in the preschool area too, so we'd actually, did that make it to today? Okay. For your review, then that contract, we're, we're going to become an approved evaluator here. So our K through twelve related services folks will start evaluating the two, three and four-year-olds. We're gonna designate a day a month so that they don't have to wait to see if they qualify because that's been a real issue. And if we've decided that the. Services themselves, if a child's on a back wait log to get into the therapy, if it goes past thirty days, we're going to figure out a way for our therapist to start seeing them as well. So. We're gonna do some professional development for them because most of them haven't worked. We have a few that have worked in a preschool setting, but a lot happens. So. They're, they're actually really excited about it. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it'll just help us in the long run because the kids will be more ready to create.
Larry.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have Mr. Slager, who's gonna talk a little bit about the middle school offerings. I'm not gonna try to do a.
Here's a share of his, he's gonna share his presentation.
I think I have.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah. I believe you can put it better.
You've seen any other girls, little girls, four?
That's right?
Yeah.
I'll just start then. So, thank you, kind of in the note of Dr. Bennett, in terms of. What we can offer our students and really opening up some possibilities. I wanted to share with you some curriculums, the program changes. That we're really looking into for next year for our eighth graders. It certainly does impact our grades six and seven too, but I can absolutely elaborate on that. So we're looking at the purpose of this, or what specifically we're looking to do for eighth grade is expand. And ensure that all students are getting Regents credits, specifically number one, and then a Regents-based science course. Again, I want to stress that this is for all. When we first shared this with our teachers. They had that moment of hesitation, what does that look like? How do we ensure a lot of success with that? So we did. Take a number of our teachers up to Windsor as part of a solution tree conference where they are doing just that, so they can get a lot of these questions that they had answered. So that we really just set our kids up for success. That's, that's the ultimate goal of this and why we're moving forward with it. So I'll kind of continue to articulate that as we go here. Why right now, it fits in with the pathways and where we're hoping to get kids to really begin to think about. Their own individual pathways. We want to ensure that kids have that option. And we're not putting down a barrier or a limit in front of any kid for what we determine as some reconceived notion of done. So it gives kids personalized learning. It helps build our opportunities for all of the kids that come through our doors every day. And it helps, helps our families. As Dr. Green has brought up, the number of credits that our high school students have in TC three. You know, it's growing substantially and for a lot of them, that means real money saved. This option opens that up as a possibility for all of our students to be able to. So some of the goals. Again, all students regardless of prior achievement, prior enrichment. Deserve to have access to accelerated coursework. Early completion of the Regents requirements. This opens the doors to higher level coursework within the high school. So what we're really thinking again, middle school between. Time students are figuring out who they are in elementary and middle school, they're continuing on what type of learner they want to become, about the exposure to the different pathways. But they are just more informed about how, how they want to move forward with high school and what options that they might have for their path. It, it gives and supports a lot of approaches. We don't want it to serve as a barrier. Option to advance coursework. Instead, this would be coursework for everyone. We already do have these courses available to some of our eighth graders. Fifty-five kids right now are engaged in this coursework. So our class next year is about a hundred and seventy kids. Realistically, you know, if we were with the same model, it'd be sixty of them. This instead, we look at the successes we currently have. A hundred percent pass rate in those exams. We've shown that the kids are able to take these Regents courses and do extremely well in coursework while they're there. And ultimately go on to pass that Regents exam. So. Again, this option opened up a lot of opportunities for those kids. In terms of the supports. What we learned when we began to ask some of the other schools, what they're thinking about, specifically what those are did. A lot of the things we have in place already, math lab, very intentionally using any academic supports. Zeroed in on how that student is doing throughout the year. In terms of strategic scheduling, thinking about who during, what we sometimes say, study all, I have a pet peeve about studying all from middle school. However. If we have them scheduling them within a structured period for their math teachers to actually intervene, provide additional support. Look to use our PLC structure, collaborating more to ensure that along with not just the eighth grade teachers who are teaching algebra one. They're also working with the high school teachers to know what additional support they may need, as well as our seventh grade teachers because they need to know. How to move forward with their students. Seventh grade teachers are already post-state exam, beginning to really focus on what algebra skills and algebra are thinking that they will need. Our science department is not far behind that, as if we really think of how we can support our eighth graders next year. What we hope to see in terms of expected outcomes. So some of the benefits, some of the impacts of them benefit. I'll just share some of, some of the highlights there and. Really what we're most hoping for, I would stress would be that more personalized, that interest-driven learning experience in high school. Earlier in the year, I know I shared that our electives will adjust. Again, that, that gives kids options, that allows them to think about. Who they want to become, what type of career they might want to be in. So the options to add in. For example, algebra one or region science, it might unlock chemistry sooner for them in their high school. And that, that would absolutely give them the option to engage in more individualized coursework.
Sean, can I ask you a question? I just want to clarify the, the science piece. Is it, does that mean we're gonna be offering earth science and living environment for our eighth graders? Because it's, when it said regions, science, it said options. So, or is it just living environment or?
Looking at what are, you know, the numbers, the strength of the staff that we have for next year, it looks more like our science in terms of the number of people we can support. I know that there's a, a bubble in terms of ninth grade next year, students taking living environment as they flip that down. So that's, that's what we would be looking at for next year.
Okay. I think one of the things, keeping with the, the structure, the setup of our school, the high, a hallway that basically joins middle and high school. And the thought around an, an eighth grader that's interested in maybe taking living environment. Based on schedule, there's probably really no reason they couldn't go take that course with the ninth graders. You know, that individual course itself.
Yeah, and again, it will come down to the individual student, what they think that their pathway is gonna be and how that, that option might better fit the. Coursework that they want to take.
There was, I don't know why, I don't know if I'm remembering here, but there used to be a physics first push. This was probably eight to ten years ago. That would align physics with math, algebra, at the same time that they were took. And I think there was some success from that, so. I was a fan of physics, not that I didn't like, like algae or some of it, but I, I wonder if that's part of the discussion. If you're gonna dive into it, look at it, just if you would. I'd love you to get your opinion on that or your back for it, of physics first and how that went. What kind of option that might be.
I can definitely support that. Do they take the line with algebra two?
Yeah.
Algebra one in terms of, and I'm, I'm saying al, is it algebra two and physics, I think that are usually more aligned?
That, although it's not a hundred percent sure on it, but I know it was. Maybe it's your past over here. I would, I'd be curious.
Another thing is, when I was teaching both living environment at the seventh grade level, I was also teaching living environment at the high school. I would share between the. Two buildings back when the buildings were separated. And I just remember how much my seventh graders could handle in regards to that. And I really was. Prepping them like I was teaching Regents classes to seventh graders. Some kid really struggled with that understandably. But we had the resources to help support them. So I was just wondering what direction we're going in regards to sciences and their science can do the same thing. As I'm sure other, other former science teachers could reflect on that. So.
And it is absolutely, I mean, it's about also the peer support, which again, our PLC structure helps that. Okay. The shared piece. So managing as our departments meet on a regular basis before those start of school day. That aspect of planning.
Thank you.
So what we're really looking at next, community engagement piece, using a thought exchange to collect some of the feedback from parents. Students, staff, there were a number of feedback already from the staff, including some of the people who would actually be teaching us and what their concerns are. They've agreed across the board that regular communication that uses the data, here's where your child is at right now. Up to well before any exam takes place because, you know, they deserve to be part of that conversation. We'll analyze the data when it comes in, in terms of from the thought exchange, and then continue to inform families here, just what that will look like. If you have concerns, here's the supports for your child as we move on to next year.
So one of the, just to keep in mind too, one of the, the, the push from the governors this year is that. You know, this aspirational goal that every kid could walk away with twelve college credits. And I think the predictor of that in terms of them. You know, potentially continuing on post-secondary education or, you know, it might be that they're, they're going in a particular trade, but they may have some, some college. Coursework that goes with them when they do that. So that is a, you know, part of this halfway piece is really to get kids out in front. Of this and give them the opportunity down the road to open up their schedules, which is probably a lot of students in here tonight, I would gather, that. Probably were in that situation and had an opportunity to take multiple college credit classes because they got ahead of the game a little bit earlier. And I would also say too, that when you think about in algebra one and potentially living environment. They're not necessarily the most difficult assessment. They're kind of built for graduation success. I would say, and probably most of the, maybe not, maybe most of the students in here agree or disagree that. Those are probably some of their more easy, easier Regents assessments versus when they get into the physics and chemistry and those other, those other pieces. So it's kind of, the system's kind of built that way. And if we can get more and more students ahead of the game here, you know, we look at, again, just note these numbers here, ninety-six students right now. With fifteen plus college credits. How many more of those students could we get to walk out of here with fifteen college credits if they had the opportunity to take? To experience this, this course of eighth grade.
So you're not, you're, you're, you're leaving the door open for potentially the student wants to take living environment, eighth grader. Up to go up to the high school day.
That would absolutely be.
Then earth science is gonna be the, the goal for eighth grade, is what you're saying, or based on staffing and their certification. Okay.
I think it's, was great. Only concern I heard is what alluded, you alluded to is that. Regarding algebra one, that it's much easier to just proficiency in algebra one. The question is, are they gonna have the foundation to do geometry? Going forward, so hardly to handle that.
Yeah, I think there's gonna have to be, there's some curricular adjustments. I think right now, our current U D seven A's. Hasn't even the hybrid of that to prepare those kids for that. So there's gonna have to be some curricular work there to, to close that gap.
Yeah, we, currently the, the seven A has been, in terms of math program, has basically prepared kids for when they take algebra one. So the teachers have been aligning what they would normally do with math seven at the end of the year to start to adjust for kids to be successful next year. They'll also be effectively using assessments to start the unit and then constantly having that performance window for students to show. What they do know so that we can then adapt. That intervention piece will be major component of it.
So keep in mind too, the three years, three years, the students will have the choice of whether they want to take the Regents pathways or not. So that, this group of, and then over the next three years of kids that we, the more we can advance to give them that continued opportunity to. To be able to take college coursework and receive credits. And then obviously down the road, it will become the choice of your pathway. So they still haven't really solidified. There probably will be some assessments at some point of some requirement of an assessment of some kind. Probably think it would be algebra, potentially a living environment or earth science maybe, or something like that. Just, and, and obviously this all depends on what happens at the federal level. Like we don't, there's just so much unknown right now in terms of, are they gonna continue to require? States to, you know, provide an assessment and data to, to the feds or is that gonna go away with? You know, potentially the, the, the paring down of the education department. So there's a lot of really unknowns at this point. Some of the conversations when I'm at, on the commissioner's advisory council are in thinking in terms of differently about the Regents. If a student is, is in a dual enrolled course, for example. If they're taking chemistry, but they're also taking college chemistry at the same time. Then why would they necessarily need to sit for that Regents exam when they've shown proficiency to pass the college course? So we're kind of, you know, we're kind of double whammying the, the testing piece a little bit. So that all has to really shake out and get figured out. From a state standpoint. But those are a lot of conversations that they're having right now. They're just, they're still under the current test. They're just, they're still under the current S-1 laws. So that's their struggle right now, is that they still have to provide that report to the feds on those assessments.
These are also two courses with a lot of skills that easily transpired into some of the other coursework that students will engage with later on in their career.
Yeah. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Mucklis is going to bring up today a little bit. The, what do you want to refer pathways or?
Pathways.
Okay, so Dr. Mucklis and I know Mr. Dale is also involved with the pathway work. I've shared a little bit of this with you guys, with the board, as you can kind of see some of the work that's been happening. There's been, there's been a team of folks that have been, you know, working on this together. Sarah Cook, who's worked with us for a number of years now at Career Center, she's also involved in some of this work. You can just see the kind of the draft document. I've shared some of this with you, so you can see that that work. But these guys are just going to talk a little bit more to it, where they're at, maybe what next steps are in terms of kind of putting the final touches on pathways. I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Absolutely. I asked Mr. Dale to come because he's really been spearheading this work with us. We've been working on this pretty diligently since September. There was some work being done before, but we've been here this year, so I can only speak of what we've been doing for this school year. I think that we worked not only in the high school on this, but we've also been working on it through the foundation of middle school, as Mr. Switer spoke about earlier, really making sure that we are vertically aligned and doing what's best for our students.
Let's just start before I forget. Give him credit to Caitlin Simpson, who put this together. I'd like to pay credit for it, but nine of us were this talented. She did a great job, gave her a pretty tight timeline, and her and Mr. Graves and the guidance really provided time and making sure the courses were there and they're working this sort of thing together. I wanted to start recognizing her for her work to put that together. So why pathways? We always talk about doing education differently, but really it's about empowering our students and giving them the background to make choices. And those choices got to be based on something. We've always had a choice, when I got to high school, I had a choice. And my choice was, that teacher walked up to me, like, hey, maybe you should think about this. I don't know what else I'm going to do, so I guess I'll think about that. I got really lucky, and it worked for me, but it only works for most of our kids. So it's a little bit about having an organized system that's based more on preparing kids to make those choices than preparing them just for a certain test, or just for, you know, certain decisions that are smaller scale. It's really about trying to build K-12 and prepare those kids to make decisions, not to make them for them, but to show that they have an organized system to do it so that they're, you know, career-ready or at some point, whether that's with college, with trade school, with going right into trades, things like that. We want it to be flexible and inclusive, which really means flexibility is you can change your choice. And there's one question we always get, well, someone picks a pathway, what happens if they want to change? Well, that's the idea. You get into pathways, you get into the higher level of pathways, hopefully you're getting experience. That's where Tom Westcott, Career Center, and things like that come in. And now we're making those choices at a younger age that are educated, and we think they're the right choice. And we go and we do some job shadows or co-op or something like that, and they decide, boy, that's not for me. Well, then they didn't make that as a $30,000 or $45,000 decision to sign more year college. They made it their junior year of high school and are able to make those changes.
It's always better than not coming out with six figures and the student loved that. So key features with this is, as you can see in your pathways kind of booklet there, there are very specific course selections that go from ninth through 12th grade. The, if you look at your chart, you'll notice that our, what we always in education classes, our core courses are underneath, they're not on top. Because really that pathway that that student is choosing, that direction they want to go, is our key feature of this. That is our point, that is our goal. It's not to take your four courses in science, your, you know, your math courses. We're really looking at what that student is going to gain by going through this pathway. Right now we're initiating really the middle school and high school, but we are going to push it down K through 12. So the goal is to work on this and solidify it right now, OAMS, OFA, and then start bringing it into the elementary school and finding ways to incorporate. So kids are really starting, Mike Pinnard are there right now, who just did his fun run, it was a good time. You know, he would start looking at his pathway and start building and looking at what he could do. So when he comes up to us at OFA, he's really got that idea of where he wants to go. It's key to integrate with all the different programs that we have around, BoS, CD programs. Having, you know, BoS program right on campus is awesome. College credit opportunities, we're always looking at ways to stand on that, whether it's through TC3, BCC, we are partnering with, trying to partner with BU. We're partnering with Portland. So we're bringing in those higher level education courses in here, also AP credits. We're constantly looking at the AP offerings and looking at ways to standard offerings that we have here. It's key though, pathways do include core academics. We're not just, you know, kids are going, just doing the lack of. They're still getting that core basic, you know, education that we always have. We're just kind of making a pathway so that when we get to college, we're not changing halfway through like I did. We're not going in one direction and deciding that we want to go in a different direction. And it really gives them that flexibility to explore what they're doing and find their pathway after they leave us here or we go. There's three major career clusters. There's Advanced Technology in Sciences, Arts, Business, Communications, Health, Human, and Public Services. I'll let Mike kind of talk more about those.
Yeah, I mean, you have a list in there of what they are under each one. We actually copy this from a school collaborating with, it's from Connecticut, last year of Connecticut. So it basically just follows a cluster pathway. The clusters are the larger heading, so hopefully as kids are starting to get introduced in the middle school, we're really looking clustered so that they find where they fall under the bigger heading. And as the courses start to, you know, they start to get more experiences, like Mr. Switer talked about, and I start seeing things in there, then we can start having those conversations to break it down at a finer level. And then as they get into their pathway, now it's easier for guidance. As the guidance council, they say, well, I'm looking at this pathway or this one. They can be looking at one pathway, but hopefully they're within the same cluster area, and they can start really looking at things and offering courses. They don't have as big of a selection there because we're not looking at everything under the sun now. We're kind of focusing in to make sure that this is an interest view. And it'll make, I think it'll make the experience less stressful in the guidance office for both parents and kids, as well as kind of home in at an earlier age, so that all the, you know, the extra stuff is still there, but they're able to home in on that through these clusters and really decide if that's the interest level that they want to get to a lower dance level a little bit quicker.
So Mike, can you just talk a little bit about the Career Center? If there were student data that kind of drove, drove these pathways? Feedback from where the interest levels from our students in general?
Yeah, so we did a survey earlier in the year just to gauge where our students were. Over 50% of our students indicated either at a three or a four level that they wanted to go into some kind of Health or Human Sciences. There's also about 40% in this state that's still in the business world. So really these helped guide what we're doing. These pathways, they're not set in stone. And as kind of New York State releases those handcuffs of those exams that were required for graduation, as we see that, we're going to be able to expand this and, you know, give more offerings because we're not going to be required to have some sort of exam like Dr. Green spoke about earlier, you know, at the end of these courses for our students. So that will help us expand our offerings to them.
The pathways come from the ACTE, which is a federal plan. And it's, so we took those, I think there were 16, 17 of those, combined some of them because we currently have course offerings to do that, and we looked at local jobs, local careers, things, you know, in this area. So we combined some of them, so we didn't have as many, and so that we could, you know, with our current offerings. And then as, as kids' interest level expands, and we start to keep data on that, that will reassess every year those and see if we want to expand or attract some of those pathways. And it wasn't just something we made up, that it came from a federal guidance.
And also thinking back to the Connecticut one, Transportation and Logistics was one of their course offerings. We didn't really have anybody that was interested in Transportation and Logistics, so that wasn't the focus.
They have a huge sector in their town that drove that.
Yeah, just to your point, and I went through the same thing, of getting halfway through and figuring out that this isn't what you want to do with your college. To the same point, I would, I would just encourage, I think this is fantastic. If you could just look and overlay Holland codes on this, you can look over Dr. Holland's codes and lay it over there. You've got a lot of instruments and a lot of research that would help with that when the guidance department, if they're not, you know, the Career Center, if they're not already. But use, use those tools that are very powerful, a lot of research that supports it, lots of facts in that if you do an assessment that's based on Holland code, like Strong Interest Inventory or something, and lay it over there, it will tease out their interest as they're tied into that. Instead of, you know, we're asking them now, like us, when we were asking our kids, we did it because, you know, Uncle Bill had a nice car, what did he do? Well, he did this job, so I want to do that. So there's, there's still some maturation that needs to happen with those interest profile. I think this is fantastic, but if you could overlay Holland code, interest profile, they do that?
Mr. Westcott, I don't remember if he'd tell you the name of everybody, I would love to.
Yes.
Yeah, so, he and I, so we're using that and working through it with him.
And we're also working down right now with TJ in the middle school and working ways to build what students' learning profiles and what they like to do. So we're building that also for the middle school. Awesome. So like you said before, we're, there's a lot of different offerings we have currently, APs. We're looking to expand, you know, give more offerings if the students in this class and they want to challenge the AP, we're giving that option. SUNY Broome TC3 partnerships, dual enrollment, sorry. That's a huge, we had a huge percentage of our students that are coming out with a massive amount of credit. So it's really exciting to see. I was up at SUNY Portland about a week and a half ago, and Portland City School District was excited to have, I think it was 12 students that received a TC3 credit graduate, maybe a 26, something right around there. So bigger school district, and we saw more graduates coming out, so that's very exciting. Career certifications, we have two students currently in Mechatronics at BCC, you know, IT specialist, health science, CAD. Real-world learning, I can't stress enough how awesome our Career Center is. We have students that are going into internships, project-based learning. One of our students is here tonight that is actually recognized by BoSes for that program. So it's really just awesome the opportunities that our students have, looking to expand on that. We're not staying stagnant, what we have, we're looking to build those partnerships and work with local communities, businesses, and expand the offerings that we're giving to our students personally.
So just one thing I want to add to that too, so you think about all of this work kind of going on around the changes from the blue ribbon, the blue ribbon measurements from the state and then the work on the pathways, and then thinking about how do we fund, fund what we're focused on, right? So we take the feedback from our, from our students, from our community, and then determine what those pathways look like. And I know that this year we had, you know, we talked about, we had a number of retirements. So and thinking about what are we replacing, what are we not replacing? So when we looked at, you know, kind of back to what the future of where we're trying to go, you know, you've seen a technology teacher posted, because obviously that's a, that's a big piece where we're lacking and a business teacher, which we certainly are in need of as well by looking at the numbers. So we have to be more strategic programmatically in thinking about how moving forward, that we're not just staffing, re-staffing something that we've done for year after year after year just because we're stabbing with a purpose to make sure that we're meeting the future of our students.
Impact goals, we want to increase student engagement, right? Get the students more involved in their own choices. Go that, provide equitable access to high-quality careers. That's one thing going through this, and we found when we started laying out courses and early courses, and I think we do a really good job providing coursework for a lot of our high flyers. Obviously, we talked about metallics and that. We're also looking at what other coursework are we hitting every level of student, every student interest in certain way, and we found maybe some holes in both what we needed to offer course-wise offerings to make sure we're hitting every pathway and making sure that we're hitting students, whether it be, you know, struggling students at this level or things like that as well. And we want students to make a decision based on process. We talked about Uncle Eddie or whatever, I always call it the CSI effect, right? Where we, kids are making, when I was 15 years old, we wanted to be a criminal, forensic, whatever, vote, and thought it was really cool and had these awesome lives and prehensives, they don't. But, you know, and then they went into it, and I was, whoa, that's, you don't really just go off that way, cop, science, and reporting to the business. And so we really want those kids, you know, make, have those experiences and make those decisions based on experiences, not based on mom and dad or Uncle Eddie or whoever. And then obviously every bit of this is building partnerships with our local industry and post-secondary institutions. You know, it's been, since Dr. We got here, a focus. If we're not, we're not getting input from the community, we're not really doing our job on this. And we'll talk a little bit more on the next steps, if you want to go there to do that. So we're going to continue to evaluate course offerings and electives at all levels. I haven't really talked a lot about elementary because that's the hardest one. And we're kind of working through that, but it's really, our thought is to make it the elementary group more skill-based, where we have an assess, assess kids' skills throughout, and then get to fifth, sixth grade. Instead of saying, I want to be a farmer, a firefighter, or a cop, right? We now have something social that we're able to have discussions, like, hey, we really support how you these things and these, and this and this. Now we can start having discussions when they get into middle school and the cluster. You think you've fallen here, what do you think of this? And have discussions based on something more than just interest. And then they move into middle school, in middle school they're looking at, what am I good at now and who am I? And they're really doing some cool things with Patrick Hans Verkler and TJ with that who am I thing going on in middle school and really working through that so that we're able to make decisions that come high school time, ninth, 10th grades, to do that. We want to work with stakeholders to build a portrait of a graduate, that's probably our next big step. So, or hopefully we're to be, we want to step up when we do that because that's really our guarantee when kids walk out. Portrait of a graduate is, here are the five or six things that we are saying our graduates walk away with. To me, and some people, like, it's not important to me that they walk away with 17 Regents scores. Like, to me, I want to say, our kids walk away and we can show how this is, they've done this, they've done this, they've done this, right? They have these qualities that they've proven. And as they get into their juniors and senior years, and we start talking about capstones and things like that, we're going to have a documented evidence, we're going to have a portfolio, if you will, like, this is how this kid met that criteria, and they're walking away. And that criteria won't be based necessarily on a test score, it might be based on experience or projects or things like that that they go. So the portrait of graduates, like I said, that's our next big step. And it's really important that we get together with the community and we really drive because everything should come back to us. As a kid walks away from second, third grade, they're saying, okay, here's the six attributes that we deem the most important as they walk away, what's level one, K through three? What's level two, three, or four through six? And establish those, and everything kind of comes back to them. So you'll be hearing more about that process as we go through it, and hopefully a couple of you get to be a part of it. As I said, expand our business partnership and then work with the students and families to evaluate our pathway effects post-graduation. That takes time, we have to get this in place, but then we want to go back and have some, if you don't get feedback, what good is it all? Right? We want to go back and ask, hey, when you got to college, hey, when you got to the workforce? What could we have done, what did you find different, what did you find useful, things like that? Look at and see if, and it's going to be hard, but work with Tom and see how many of our kids that start graduating, how many of them change their major through college, and hopefully find what we have in fact compared to these national averages.
It's important to realize that this isn't set in stone. This is, you know, we're going to work through it, it's a very fluid thing in terms of we're going to see what works, what doesn't, and we're going to make the changes to make sure we're doing what's best for our students.
So right now, this roadmap with the board is, was.
So right now, this, this roadmap with the board is, was, you've shared with the board, but not necessarily in the slides. I'm just using these two examples because I know in the community, there's a perception that we're not doing business or we're not doing the arts. And this roadmap is telling us we're doing studio art, graphic design, fiber art, jewelry design, drawing and painting. Right? And you have a staffing board and that's if you want to move into this pathway. Same thing in business, which I was pleased to see, accounting, advertising, entrepreneurial, I mean, advertising, organizational leadership. I mean, what a roadmap. I wish I had something like this when my girls are going to school, just in case they didn't decide to go into science or to education, you know, this is wonderful.
I think we need to prepare our teachers for offering, you know, there's teachers that are teaching six periods a day, six different tracks. And they're running around, they're pulling their hair out, but they're, they're volunteering to do it because they, you know, they see value in everything they're doing. And the willingness of our teachers to, to do more than one or two content areas, what provides that.
This is, this is a document that our counselors are working with our kids on. In addition, and the assessment of what their interests are is coming from the career center.
This is a basic draft. We have a lot more things that we want to include on this, including each pathway, they have a pathway to an associate's. So in there you can see what your pathway to an associate's is and your associate would be guided by your pathway, not just trying to get a certain number of credits. It would be guided by your pathway as you go through, obviously almost.
And also the data on, on whether or not we have staffing for these particular pathways. That's the piece that's important to, based on what the interests of the kids, okay. Thank you.
As we're looking at staffing and we're making decisions on, on what we're doing, we're really looking at what our students are looking to do so that we're building those programs for the future.
And kudos to those teachers with six props.
That's crazy.
Six might be free, but I want to do that four or five. And, you know, and then we go back and where we find meetings is we try to get to you. We've talked about, you know, if we have a, an area where we have low numbers of kids, we know it's getting offered other places. Or how do we, you know, how do we look at the colleges around as we have students going to BCC? You know, if there's courses that we can't justify the numbers, how do we still get those, get those kids the experience of working with other schools in the area or the colleges?
Wonderful.
Any questions?
Well, we'll keep, continue to keep you updated as this evolves and there certainly will be more, a lot more work that goes into it. Just to kind of transition here, I want to, before Dr. Muckus talks about cell phones, just so. I think everybody's aware, and if you're not, the governor, a huge push this year in, in law passed that students are no longer to have cell phones from bell to bell. I won't share my comments publicly completely because I think that there's always, there's always different ways to do things. However, there's many times that the state tells us we have to do something and then we're kind of, we're kind of in that camp to have to do it. So one thing I will say is I, I have spoken to quite a few other superintendents of districts across the state who have done it. And are seeing really positive results with their kids. At the same time, I think it's important to figure out a way forward that we can, you know, technology continues to be a, you know, really important piece for kids. And the learning side of that and managing that piece at the same time. But these are just some examples of it. Most right now are going to this model, they're using, it doesn't necessarily have to be Yonder, but some type of a, of a bag that students would use. And, and Dr. Muckus will kind of take you through that. And, you know, I'm a, I believe that we're, we're moving, obviously you're seeing this transformation around AI and technology. And I watch what our kids can do on their phones and everything else and I'm completely amazed because I can't do hardly any of it. And there's a lot of future to think about there too, in terms of jobs and, and whatnot. And I think that that, we have to keep that in mind, even though, you know, we have these requirements upon us. So how do we, how do we manage that piece and continue to push forward with technology, but knowing that, you know, the cell phone necessarily won't be accessible during school day?
It's a polarizing topic, like Dr. Green said, we, when we heard from Governor Hope Holby that she was pushing for this legislation. We started talking as a, as building levels on the middle school and high school administration of what does this look like? Because we never want to be reactive, we kind of want, we want to be proactive and come up with a solution. I had the opportunity to go out to Tyreke Central to see how they're using it, so they are using the under pouches. I got to see dismissal because that was our big, big concern is how are we going to dismiss with students, you know, over a thousand students in six, 12 here? What, what's that going to look like? So we've also been speaking in the principal meetings extensively about what this looks like, what are people going to do? And as we started speaking and as we looked at it, really the, with how the legislation is written, that you can have a cell phone out from bell to bell. Really, the pouch option was the one that made the most sense for us as a school district for, for multiple reasons, which we'll, we'll talk about a little bit during this. So this is a presentation that Yonder did present, give to us. This actually came out before New York State officially passed the law. But one in seven countries have banned phones in school. And 75% of schools in the US have some form of restriction on cell phone use during school hours. Our policy this year was based on teachers, so if a teacher wanted to use the cell phone in the classroom, they were able to. If the student was away, it was expected to be away. Really, the idea of going to these pouches is because it, it stops that antagonistic relationship with, between teachers and students. Having a teacher maintain, and, and if the student pulls out their phone, it, it will be a battle the entire time. And the fact that we can't have them out from bell to bell, you know, hallways, monitoring hallways, monitoring lunchrooms. All these things are going to be very difficult, really cause the relationship between staff and students to degrade. And really having that in place and having something in place that's manageable is really important for, for our staff. The solution we have really looked into is the Yonder program. That is the pouch. So basically when the students enter the school, each student would have a pouch assigned to them. They would put their cell phone inside of the pouch. It'll be off, it goes right in here, it's shut, it's clicked, it's now locked away for the day. We have movable unlocking units, but we also have units that are up on the wall that are unlocked at the end of the day. Students would walk by, take their pouch, you put on the top, you hit the button, cell phone's unlocked. Watching this at Tyreke Central, it literally took students less than 10 seconds to unlock their cell phone. So it really was a fluid process. That was one of our biggest concerns was that end of the day traffic as we're trying to get out towards, get to the buses and release. So right now, Yonder is partnered in 27 countries. This really is the leading pouch system that is in the US right now. We've looked, a lot of the pouch systems are international, there's very few that I could find in the US. That's why we contacted them and it is in all 50 states currently, like I said, it's used at Tyreke Central. Vassal did implement it this past year and we've been hearing rumblings of other local districts that are looking to implement the system in the fall. Yonder is also a partnership, it's not us randomly coming up with regulations. They come in, they're helping us every step of the way, they're going to help us with placing the, where we're going to place the unlocks so that we have the best flow out. We're going to training and support for our staff. They're even, you know, willing to come in and speak to our students. So say for freshman orientation that we have right before school starts, they'll, they can come in and show and have conversations with parents at that same time. They have curriculum resources, their self-on activity guides, there's lots of different things they provide. It's also important to note that they all, these are not all locked pouches. So if a student has a medical reason to have a cell phone, they have pouches that look like that, but they're just magnetized. So they can do it so if somebody is diabetic or has a reason to have their cell phone out. So there are accommodations that they can make for those students. This was kind of interesting when we looked at this survey results, 86% of schools saw a positive impact in safety and wellness. 84% saw a positive change in student engagement and 68% saw an improvement in academic performance. One of the biggest things that the conversations we've had with local and districts around is lunchroom is loud again. It's not silent like it is now, it's kind of back to that kind of rumbling that you used to hear in, in their heavy conversations in those settings. Rather than everybody staring at their phone. So this was the success rate that they came up with, this is the study that they had. 38% increased probability of passing grades. So before, you can see in sixth grade, went from 82 to 84, 12 people went from 84 to 89, I won't go through all that, but this was after the first year with Yonder. As Dr. Green said earlier, you know, there, there are positives and negatives for cell phones. We've been doing a lot of work with the AI, I can see both sides here. You know, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on what you believe, you know, we have to follow the law and we have to have assistance in place. This was very interesting to me, where the schools that saw referrals and bullying and harassment decreased significantly. You know, having that cell phone on 24/7, I can tell you in my role, I see quite a bit of cell phone messages that are going on during the day even. And students will come up and show me what's going on and not having that will be a positive effect. And having that from bell to bell, not having that ability to, to shoot out a text behind a screen to, to somebody. I, I do honestly believe that will be a positive to have your cell phones out. So getting started, so they're helping with the planning, we're still in that planning stage, this is our first step of, you know, having a conversation with the community. Have the community outreach, we work with the implementation, so if we do choose to go with this, we would be working with them over the summer for that September start to implement this. And even after we've implemented it, we can still have those conversations with Yonder to, this is what we saw, what do you recommend? Because they have experience, as you saw, throughout, not only in the US, but across the world.
What's the cost associated with this implementation?
So each pouch is $3, so it is a significant amount, you know, investment in it for this. Couldn't find much more that was cheaper, I don't know if there's options, but we.
I was thinking about the summer, the latest, that there'll be a, a host east coast or someplace that.
There's a potential.
Be purchasing these through, yeah, so the governor, I think, Alex, $13 million or this, which really isn't all that much, we think about in their state. But I do think that that will, it will be something that's achievable. So in our case, probably 78%, 80% of the, the cost we should receive back.
We're not sure of that yet, are we?
Nope, nope, nope. So each unlock station is $100, each pouch is $30, that's the price tag.
And so just from going to Tyreke Center, how many lock, unlock stations do they have for the kids?
So for, for us, we're looking at 18 is the number that we're looking at.
And they're $100.
They're $100 piece. And there we have, I think, a little over 1,000, 15 students in our six, 12.
This is an example of well-funded, but really un-funded.
No, it's not un-funded, man, that's in a million.
13 million.
Yeah.
In my coverage, your decision.
Where is the pouch during the day?
So the students will have it with them, so they'll put it in their backpack, they'll have it on their physical being. We're not taking cell phones from students, that's another positive to this pouch op, option, is that student actually has their cell phone with them all day.
Yeah, the expectation is it'd be, it would be off or silent, is silent, is that?
Silence, you can't have air, have earbuds, you can't have a smart watch. Anything that connects to a, the internet cannot be, unless it's a school, yeah. So, you know, computers, iPads, those are okay, but anything personal cannot have.
So the intention be that like a smart watch, stuff like that would go in there as well?
Go in there as well, yes. That's what the reading of the law is currently.
Are there any discussions about liability for harassment? When we were outside of school, we still brought into the school, the school had to deal with that, is that something that may change?
I doubt it.
I hope you don't.
That would be great, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could all shut off here, we don't have them, that's something that happened outside of school.
I mean, that was, as you know, for the Supreme Court, so we'd have to go that route again.
Any other questions on?
So we, we did obviously put out feedback through Thought Exchange and credit to our students, this is the largest feedback we've ever received with Thought. That we've done to the entire community. They were invested in this, they provided some really good feedback. I want to say it was like over a thousand that participated, so normally we get a hundred. But when they get involved, we get a lot more, so.
I'm sure they're all supportive too.
Oh, very.
Very supportive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Muckus.
10, District Business, 10-1, Good Award, capital project, you know, 10-1 through. Was it 10-4?
Yeah.
10-4, need a motion? It's all over. Second?
Okay.
In discussion?
Jay?
Aye.
Lydette?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jerry?
Do you need to move? After public comment?
Yes, ready for a jury.
Public comment? Yeah. I'm not having a public comment possible. Put you down, hey. Amy Cole? Two minutes.
Joe, can we just, we, they have like assistants, could it be Ash and Kylie Dunn?
Nope, I just.
Please? You got it.
Why?
Wait a minute, I'm going to ask a question. Who's presenting, it's, it's thought out, so who's talking, I mean, who's? What are you representing?
Oh, coaching and teaching.
Coaching and teaching.
Hi, my name is Ashen Dawn and I'm a sophomore from Olego Free Academy. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I just want to say how important Coach Berkler is to our flag program and we wouldn't be headed, headed to the state championship for the second year in a row without him. I've never had a coach more enthusiastic about us four and it shows the time and effort he puts into every practice and every game for this team. When I was younger, one summer I participated in a PE camp for the school and I used to beg Mr. Berkler to let me go to school, even if it was just, even if we just got out of bed. To this day, he will always joke about it or remind me about it because that's the kind of person he is, making sure everyone laughs and have a good time. I know I can speak, speak on the behalf of countless others when I say that we need Coach Berkler in our program and in our school district. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, I'm Kylie Griffin, the QB of the flag football team and a student worker at Olego Elementary School. I want to discuss a matter that is very important to me and the community. As a student worker who works in the elementary school, I have witnessed firsthand the effect Mr. Berkler has had on each kid. When he walks into a classroom, kids are flooding the door to see him. He's a positive role model to everyone in the district. I recently have torn my ACL and he has helped me through everything, always checking in on me, never forcing me to do anything past my comfort zone, whether it's practice or a game. I would not be the player or person I am today without him, thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Cole, a freshman athlete and a sports athlete. My teammates are.
My teammates and I are here to talk about the future of our program. As you guys might know, we're ranked number one in the state for our class and that creates a huge accomplishment, as no other sport in Uwego's is. Whereas of right now, seventeen and O, regional champions and sectional champions. And after some tough challenges this year due to unfortunate injuries, and with that, we've still kept our title. Our varsity flag football team made it all the way to states last year and we're heading to states this weekend as well. And I can tell you all how this was possible, Coach Rusty Burke. I've never met someone who puts so much work into something it could just get knocked out of it. They email us for every week, making sure we know our schedules, the film you watched and the games he's got. Taking his time to learn other plays from teams and make sure we have updated plays for our spans every week. For our sectional game this year, it was supposed to four, so we went as far as to wear all the flags and footballs to make sure we're comfortable catching and playing live in such conditions. This isn't the start as to the work and effort he puts into our program. Being the best girls' football team in our class aside, he doesn't just impact our program, he's a huge impact to our lives. He shaped so many minds at elementary school all the way to graduates from five years' skill. I can guarantee you, you can bring anyone in here and they'll tell you the same thing I can. The bowling team went from having a struggling program to turning into winning sectionals. The program has skyrocketed since he took over as head coach. There's still clearly a common denominator here, whether it's in the elementary school gym, the bowling alley or the football field. As a female athlete who's always been mediocre at everything and never really wanted to put the effort into working on stuff outside of practice, football can have me in a whole new world. I watch film, I pass and catch at home and I'm willing to, if I can, get on the field. There are so many people who get no other opportunities and taking Coach Burke away as a teacher and coach directly affects so many children. It affects the students who love him in the elementary school as well as all of his student athletes. Many people can coach, but nobody can shape the minds of a student athlete like he does. He teaches us hard work and dedication, he leads by example and is a positive role model to both boys and girls in our community. Our school pages, all I read is all of they building a positive and winning culture. But if you take a step back and just look, Coach Rusty Burke has done just that and embraced that from the ground up in our flag football program. Men's football has history pages that are already filled in, but women's flags history book has just begun and this is a huge opportunity for us. As some may know, senior on our team, Bella Silvestri, is one of the first females to commit to playing college in New York State. That's in his pages being filled in. To us, this is gripping to our futures and when it's something that is growing everywhere, but not super supportive here when I believe we have a coaching staff who's best in section four by far. I know it involves me and many other young players waiting to fill in those pages if we take that away from us. It's an atmosphere like nothing out of her experience. We aren't just a team or family. As students, we're constantly being prepared to be good employees and positive participants in the workforce. How are we supposed to do that on the perfect example of being punished and taken away for no reason? I and many other of my teammates will fight this as much as we can because we know that's what he would do for us. We've always been taught as students to stand up for what's right and let our voices be heard. Now's our chance to do that. If Coach Burke our new year is going to be here today and you tell us not to because that's the person he is, always putting himself last and his team first. I hope the board administration can reconsider this decision. I'd like to thank you all for your time and I hope my words resonate with you all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kylie Craven and I'm a sophomore at Uwego Free Academy. This year, I was not planning on playing flag football due to the fact that I'm a varsity lacrosse player as well. Coach Burke had encouraged me to play at the beginning of the season and I was hesitant as I was concerned about lacrosse and flag conflicting and being too stressful. However, since he had convinced me to be a part of this team, I have not, I have absolutely fell in love with not only the sport, but my teammates and this program. We as dual athletes are so fortunate to have a great coach who makes it a point to accommodate our schedule and support us in both sports. The tiny commitment our coach puts into this program is very admirable and it shows by the result of our successful season and going to states for the second year in a row. Since day one of the season, I was promised that my needs were to come first and Coach Burke has shown that to me throughout this entire season. Every practice is filled with passion and determination that Coach Burke had instilled in us. And the passion I have felt for this football season has been unmatched to any other season I have played in. I feel so grateful to be able to have this opportunity like this to play flag football in our school district as I know and experienced to play in a team like this comes once in a lifetime and I owe it to Coach Burke and his unconditional support. I truly cannot imagine the rest of my high school athletic career without playing flag football and his helping sport fighting for. Thank you.
I, I would just add that if you haven't had a chance to watch that team play and those girls play, you should see the penalty and everything that's made about high school sports. And you can watch them on the National Football and FHS or whatever it is in Canada. You really should watch them play.
Are you so?
No, but I'm trying to keep the, I'm here two minutes.
Don't worry. The girls did a great job talking to everyone about like what a great coach Rusty is. But not only is he a great coach, he's also an amazing teacher. My second graders and the first graders that I had last year like are thrilled to be in his presence at any time. Like he like is all about sports and kids, so. But we've created and maintained like a lot of other teaching positions in the district for a lot of coaches that are great coaches. And I feel that if we lose him as a teacher, we're going to lose fifty-plus hundred kids in football and bowling too. I mean, so I think we really need to reconsider what's happened to Rusty this coming year before we lose him.
Anyone else? Hey, you want to say something?
Oh, go quick.
Can I speak quickly? My name is Garrett Dodge. I've been associated with this district for forty-two years. I started kindergarten when I was six years old. Thank you. And you know, one thing that I always enjoyed when I was in high school, you know, teachers like Mrs. Gretz who were here when I was in high school. We had teachers for a long time and there were teachers who wanted to be here. And I would encourage the district to consider maintain, retaining the teachers who want to be here. One thing that I've noticed since my kids have been in high school is there's a lot of teachers in the school that I don't know. And I've had teachers coming here or I've had students, my children, in the school for many, many years. And we see teachers come and go all the time. And one thing I do know about Rusty is that he wants to be here. And he had opportunities to go to other schools and he chose to stay here. He's a great coach. I would consider him my friend as well. I've coached flag football with him for three years now. And I see the investment he makes in these girls. And there's obviously a very good reason that we have twelve students here to support him and encourage you to keep them here not only as a coach, but as a teacher as well. I've been in classrooms with him, I've coached with him. The investment he makes in the students, the investment he makes in the coaching staff, the program, his own personal money, I've seen him invest in the, in the flag football program. Paying for pizza to have the girls stay and just do, what do we call them? Movies and popcorn and pizza nights just to build the team. And one of the girls mentioned the fact that, you know, at the end of practice, we always break it down, you know, one, two, three, family. And I said on WABO the other morning, when we do that in practice and at the end of games, it's not just something we say. It's something I think we all feel and we all believe. This group of girls is a fantastic group. And I think a lot of that is because of the investment that Rusty and the coaching staff has made in this group. And I would really encourage this district to consider keeping him on staff as, not only as a coach where they all get to enjoy him, but as a teacher as well because I feel like he's a, a great asset to this community and to, to this district. And I don't think, you know, yeah, he's a vestal grad, we shouldn't hold that against him. But he has really come into the Uwego district and, and really become part of the, the fabric of this community. And I, I think he's a great asset to the district.
Hi, my name is Olivia Dodge. I am a senior captain on the team along with Bella, Silvestri, Katie Affane and Lexi Rissig. I know that two of our other captains couldn't be here today, but Bella and I are here to support Emmy and everyone else speaking on behalf of Rusty Burke. We have seen the tremendous impact that he has made on all of us. So four years ago, he created a flag program out of literally nothing. We are one of the first teams in New York State to create a program and to create a program and grow it all over New York State. So it is really incredible to see how he has grown a program out of nothing and has really invested in so many athletes and sorry, this is so stupid. But Rusty has, um, he's taught us how to collaborate and come over to be sportsmanlike. I mean, we have seen Alex Albo, she won a, her, the giant award last year. You don't see many districts having athletes being recognized for like NFL awards from teams. Like you don't see athletes being created out of nothing. Rusty has, Rusty came up to me as a freshman and tried to get me to play and I told him, no, I resisted him for an entire year until I played my sophomore year. Rusty will forever hold that against me, but I mean, like, I'm not the athlete I would, I'm not the athlete that I am without Rusty Burke. He has invested in me as a person, like I, I, I work at OES now, I work in the Solbo's classroom. And I can tell you that I, I enjoy going up to bug him every morning in his office before he goes to work. And I hope I'm highlighted today, but like, I, I love, I love seeing his face at work. I love being able to see him in classrooms and see him all around the building. I love watching him work with students up and down the hallway as I move from kindergarten or moving from his dad's room or all the first grade and second grade. Like it is incredible to see the impact he's makes on students, also all the way nine through twelve. He has invested so much time and effort into this program. And you don't see other high schools investing and going to, going to tournaments all of, all across the, the United States. We went to Tampa this past January and we, we played really well. We were supposed to only play five games and we got to compare, compete against some of the best travel teams in the United States. Like we did very well, we were ranked, we were seeded sixth in that tournament and we, we did get pretty far. Like we, he's invested financially and, and like emotionally and mentally and physically into relationships with all of us as students. And we would be, I can say on half of all the captains and seniors, we would be heartbroken to see him no longer be part of the staff and have that same impact on other athletes and students when he had that impact on us. So we would love to see for his, his position to continue and for his impact to still be allowed next year and for the years to come on the flag program because that's something that's still growing and that's something he can still have a lasting impact on. Thank you.
So before anyone else pops up out on the stage, you know, to recognize the impact on two sports is, I think, is noteworthy. But the thing that, that I take away from it the most, kind of selfishly, is that girls get to appreciate football. For the longest time, it's very difficult to try to explain to other people and females at times because they haven't experienced it. Now, the fact that you can get involved in football, you know, football, it's great. And appreciate it, play it at a high level, I think that's wonderful. Just wanted to share that with you. Anybody else? Hey?
I don't know if you voted on it already or not. I saw, it was like twenty-seven thousand dollars for fifty-four graduates and scholarship money. Is that correct? Twenty, twenty-seven thousand dollars for fifty-four? All I gotta say is few things have ever been as happy enough inside of my family as seeing that up there today. Thank you. About time.
Did you notice it started at the beginning of the year, we'll discuss what we're going to do with that money? I think everyone just kind of understood that there was a plan, but I think the awareness of it was very helpful.
Well, thank you for doing what you're right.
We all did it. Anybody else? Going to executive session? The motion, go on to executive session? Second?
Second.